Good evening, Eileen, can you please open up the meeting?
Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, August 12th, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner: First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility has been designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in rendering their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Here.
Mr. Cantor has been excused. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Orozco has been excused. Mr. Stanton has been excused. Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson?
Here.
Chairman Seiya?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Everyone, please join. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can we please swear in the professionals?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth of the hope?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Charles Conliffe.
Jennifer Beam.
Shari Spiro.
Your professionals are sworn in.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item five on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, July 8th, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Scottson, and Seiya. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hughes.
Second.
Scottson, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, minutes are approved.
Thank you. Item six, vouchers. Eileen, any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Eileen, item seven, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
The only thing is an email I sent to all the members about stormwater training for all board members, and we have to keep a record of who's watched it and for Charlie to complete some items. Quite a few have already done it and sent me their emails, but if you haven't, please do so as soon as possible. It's just a short video that you have to watch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, resolutions before the board. Case number BA 23-10, Royal T19 LLC, resolution granting use and preliminary site plan approval and C variances. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Seiya. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hughes.
I'll second.
Ryan. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 23-07, U-Haul Company of New Jersey, resolution granting use variants and preliminary and final major site plan with bulk variances. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Seiya. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Barillo.
I'll second it.
Ryan. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 23-22, Infinity Plaza LLC, resolution granting conditional use variance and minor site plan with bulk variances. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Seiya. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay. Mertens and Hughes, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Case number BA 20-101A, AAR SHW Properties LLC. This is a resolution granting use variance and amended final major site plan with bulk variances. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, and Seiya. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Barillo.
Second.
Hughes, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Last of the resolutions. Case number BA 10-17, SPA-2, Townhomes at Eagle Oaks, resolution granting two-year, two-one-year extensions of time. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scottson, and Seiya. Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ryan?
Second.
Scottson, roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Now we move on to item nine of the agenda, applications before the board. Case number BA 24-06, Turkish American Religious Foundation, Inc. This is a conditional use variance and preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance relief. Description: Application of Turkish American Religious Foundation, Inc. as applicant and owner seeking approval for the conversion of an existing single-family dwelling to a place of worship, with one caretaker residing on premises known as Block 59.01 lots 48, 49, and 41.03, Fore Windler Road. This application was partially held on July 22nd, 2024, when it was carried to August 12th with no further notice. Expiration date, September 25th, 2024. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. Just by way of brief introduction, as the chairman indicated, we did present operational testimony at the last hearing. During the course of that testimony, two changes were highlighted that are of note. One is that there was a back portion of the property, a very large tract of vacant land lot 41.03, which we advised the board is not part of this application, no site improvements were proposed. So it's really just the main lots where the single-family home currently exists. And then, secondly, we indicated that there is not going to be a caretaker residence, it will be the home, the parsonage of the imam. And as a result of that, the D1 relief would not be required because the parsonage is ancillary to the house of worship use. Since the last meeting, we've also submitted revised plans with two changes to be highlighted. One is we eliminated the illuminated sign, and Mr. DiFolco will get into that momentarily. We also have eliminated the reference in the plans to a sister's prayer room. The bedroom, which was going to be a bedroom and the imam's bedroom and the sister's prayer room, is only going to be the imam's bedroom, so there is no separate prayer room for women, any prayers will be conducted in the main prayer room. Having said all that, I'd like to introduce Mr. DiFolco, who is our civil engineer. He was not sworn in or qualified at the last meeting. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth of the hope?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Richard DiFolco, D-I-F-O-L-C-O.
And Mr. DiFolco, would you place your...
So, Sal, before we go forward, do you think that it would be great to have your client discuss these changes on the record?
If you, the two that I, the only change that he didn't testify to was the sister's prayer room, the others we did testify to.
And the removal of the other lot, which was, I get it, but I'm just saying, I think probably we want to put it on the record.
All right, we'll bring him up. It'll take a minute.
Yeah.
Set it.
We still need to get Mr. DiFolco's.
We'll get him.
Okay.
He'll remember, he'll remember his credentials, I believe. Introduce yourself again to the board, please.
My name is Sadek Sadek. I'm the president of the T-A-R-F, Turkish American Religious Foundation.
And you understand you remain under oath from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I highlighted a couple of operational items that board planners suggested we place on the record through your testimony. So the first is Lot 41.03, which is the large vacant tract to the rear of your property. That is no longer part of this application, that's a vacant lot, and you're not proposing any improvements to that property, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Secondly, in the plans, there was a reference previously to the sister's prayer room, that has been eliminated, is that correct?
Yes.
So if, where will all the prayers, whether it be male or female, take place within the building if this were approved?
In the main room.
Can I speak?
In the main room?
In the main prayer room that's already identified in the plan? Okay. And then finally, again, there's not going to be a caretaker on site, only the imam, and that will be his parsonage home, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I need, I have no questions, I just wanted to be officially on the record, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. And he's here for questions ultimately, if there are questions.
Okay.
All right, Rich, I ask you to place your credentials on the record, please, would you do that?
Yes, certainly. Licensed engineer since 1977, I've appeared before this board since 1989, and I've done many site plans and subdivisions in Howell, I own JKR Engineering, which specializes in private work in Monmouth Ocean County for subdivision site and site plans.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiFolco, your office, through you, have prepared the site plan which is submitted to the board?
Yes.
And you also prepared the revised site plan that was recently submitted?
Correct.
Okay, would you describe for the board, from an engineering site plan point of view, exactly what's being proposed?
Do you want to get into the change already or do you not?
No. Okay, so. General.
All right. So in Lot 48 and 49 of Block 59.01, approximately seven acres of property at the corner of Georgia Tavern and Windler Road, there's an existing residence, about 836 square feet, a small residence. And within that residence, the applicant is proposing to have religious services and an onsite imam to live there, as well as provide spiritual guidance to his congregation. The proposed site is located closer than 75 feet to the streets, and therefore we needed the D variants. We don't comply with the setbacks as a conditional use in the zone. We do have a parking lot, the revised plan provides 75-foot setback to the parking lot where the earlier plan did not, and we would have needed a variance or waiver from that setback. The site is proposing a gravel parking lot for nine vehicles, a paved entrance and concrete apron. There's an existing apron at Windler Road, and we have a paved handicap parking space near the existing handicap ramp which leads from grade up to the first floor of the building. There is no curbing proposed, no lighting proposed, as all of the services take place during the day, nothing at night. There is a shed on the property which is proposed to be relocated to the back end of the parking lot, where the trash can for the imam will be placed inside the shed. There's no major trash generator at the facility.
And we did testify at the last meeting, there'll be no food preparation of any kind on site?
Right, right. So there is a kitchen, which is part of the single-family residence for the imam, but there'll be no food preparation or beverage preparation for anybody attending the prayer services. That will not be used. The County Board of Health is aware of that and made the stipulation in their approval that should anybody in the future use the kitchen for any food or beverage, they would need reapproval of the County Board of Health. But as it stands now, there is no food prep needed. The site is connected to the sanitary sewer. I know the engineer had a question about whether it is or it isn't, but it is, and we have a letter from the county with the date of the connection, I don't recall the date, but there's a report with the date of connection, and we need to verify with the Board of Health and the township that the septic system was filled in and removed from the site. The site has public water and the other facility that has gas. As you can see in the photograph on the screen, the side view of that building faces Windler Road, is proposed to put a site sign to the left of the first window on the left. So between the meter and the window, there'll be a small sign, pretty much at the bottom of the window, it's like a three-foot by three-foot wall-mounted sign, not illuminated, that just has a street address and the name Turkish American Religious Foundation on it with the street address. The proposal also proposes landscaping in the front yard of the building on both Georgia Tavern Road and Windler Road, and we've increased the amount of parking lot screening. We did get a letter from Shari about landscaping, and we agree with her letter about adding some additional trees and varying the type of landscaping around the dwelling.
And that's an August 8th letter, is that correct?
That's correct.
What about potential road dedications?
So this site has frontage on the two streets, and there was a road improvement by the township, I'm going to guess 15, 20 years ago, and at that time, the township acquired an easement from this lot owner to install the improvements along the street, which basically was curb and sidewalk and some road widening. So the easement exists today, and the edge of the easement is where a future right-of-way line would be if it was to be dedicated to the township. Right now, the sidewalk and curb lies within an easement for road widening purposes.
Mr. Chairman, could I just jump in, I'll just ask some pointed questions. So, yeah, so what Mr. DiFolco said is correct, they did dedicate some easements along both frontages. Our circulation element was updated a couple of years ago, and the classification of Georgia Tavern actually increased the right-of-way requirement. So does the applicant have an issue providing the additional five-foot easement along the frontage on Georgia Tavern?
No. We prefer the easement, though, if that's what we would like to do, is keep the easement and not dedicate the land.
Yeah, I mean, I know the town just paved both roads and put curb and sidewalk, so I don't foresee any improvements coming in the immediate future, but it gives us the ability to do something if we need to in the future. Regarding the parking, they comply with what's required, there's 28 spaces in the building, which requires nine parking spaces. They actually reduced the parking lot with the revised plans to show not having more. They put bumper blocks in to make sure people aren't driving through the end of spaces. I had a comment in my letter, I was just concerned about how the parking area on the western end kind of just like dead ends to grassed area, about that maybe potentially becoming an overflow and maybe the use increasing with the applicant have an issue with maybe putting a fence or some kind of barrier on the western end just to...
Well, yeah.
Or trees, or trees.
Right. So the question is, at the end of the nine-space parking lot, would there be a barricade or something to prevent future extension or future parking beyond what was on this plan? The applicant spoke to me, and what he'd like to do is have a, I'd call it banked parking for those extra five spots to get back to the 14. Not build them, but if the need develops, we can put that temporary bumper up now where it is, and in the future, it would be on the plan, and he could just extend it for whatever the footage, I think it's another three and three, so that'd be 27 feet longer stone in the future.
Okay, so, so how about for the temporary, just this post and rail fence at the limits of the...
Post and rail fence works fine.
Yeah, and then if they want to expand it, you can show it on the revised plan, and they can come back and move the fence in the future. I think to Shari's point, maybe if you show on a resolution compliance plans where the additional five spaces are going to go, maybe put some plantings at the end of it, so that way, you know...
It's not moving plantings.
We can do it administratively in the future.
That's fine.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we don't know that the town's going to accept an easement, right?
So we'll work with the...
No, hold on a second. You don't know today that they're going to accept an easement, correct?
Correct.
So if they require a dedication, then you need a variance, and it's a D3 variance, because it impacts the setbacks. So we can't just wait to determine whether they're going to accept an easement or not, you're going to have to provide testimony, a D3 testimony on the setbacks, assuming that it's going to be an easement, because if they don't accept a variance and they require a dedicate, or, I'm sorry, an easement and require a dedication, then you are not going to be compliant on the setbacks, and that's a D3 variance.
Okay.
And Mr. Higgins, just go ahead.
Jen, is that the setback to the parking lot, is that what you're saying?
Minimum setback from street line, 75 feet or two times the building height, that's the building.
Oh, the building is...
The current building that's going to be converted to a place of worship currently has a setback of 42.6 feet to Georgia Tavern and 39.9 to Windler. If the board requires a right-of-way dedication in lieu of easement, you're talking about 30 feet to Georgia Tavern and 31 feet to Windler, both requiring a D3 variance. So that requires D3 testimony. So we can't just wait to decide what they're going to do.
So we're going to, when Mr. Higgins comes up to deal with that, we're going to present it in the alternative, so...
That's fine. I just want to make sure we're clear, the testimony needs to be provided, you guys have to determine whether it's okay. If it's an easement, it's better, but if they want the dedication, then at least they'd have the determination.
That's fine.
So I'll just ask a couple more questions. So you are expanding the parking lot, obviously you're installing where there's one not, I know you show on the plans that gravel is stormwater management, but realistically over time, that's going to get all silted up. So would the applicant have an issue with putting drywells for the existing structure to mitigate for any runoff from the gravel parking area?
For the existing structure?
Yeah, correct.
For the house?
Correct.
That's fine.
No problem.
Okay. And then refuse, so the plan indicates it's to be stored in the existing shed that's to be relocated?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be household garbage for the imam.
Okay.
And just to clarify one thing, Charlie, the proposed banked parking plan will also show the entire parking lot slid back in case the town wants a dedication, that extra footage, so that the relocated parking lot would be outside of that 75 from the future right-of-way line dedication.
Yeah, so it would be installed on the western end of what you show now?
Exactly, but the entire lot would slide to the west.
And then grading, right, everything will be graded, so it's not impacting neighboring properties?
That's correct.
All right, and then you said no site lighting's proposed, right, so there's no need for shielding or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. And you have an LOI pending for the delineation that's shown on the plan, but you're not proposing anything in the immediate vicinity of that.
Nowhere near the wetland line or wetland buffer.
And then you talked about the existing septic system has been abandoned, or it's in the process of being abandoned?
It's been abandoned, it's, the site is connected to the sewer.
Okay.
We need to find the person who witnessed the septic being filled in and the tank being collapsed, that we don't have it yet, but it was done.
So you'll get Board of Health certificate, okay.
The Board of Health said they think Howell Plumbing inspected it, they were going back and forth of who saw it, but I think it's on record somewhere.
But yes, we'll have to get Board of Health's...
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, and then, see if I have anything else in here. I think that's all I have from engineering perspective, I'll let Jen chime in.
So are you going to talk about the buffer, or is Mr. Higgins?
You should describe it at least.
I can describe the buffer.
I mean, I know that your perspective was that the buffer only applies to the developed portion, that's not how the buffer is...
No, that I understand, I do understand that.
Right, so...
All I was pointing out was we have about a half an acre of site disturbance on a seven-acre site, you were going to say...
Rich, you are definitely, the people in the background cannot hear you, you have to look forward and talk into the microphone.
Okay. There's about half an acre of site disturbance, and the site area is seven acres, the rest of the site is wooded, which is going to be remaining wooded, it's wetlands, it's buffers, so...
But you still need relief from the buffer, right?
From the buffer, yes.
So let's talk about that.
We're planning to put an evergreen buffer on the Georgia Tavern roadside, and we'll increase that according to Shari's report. We're going to buffer the parking lot with at least three-foot-high evergreen shrubs so that it's shielded from the view of both roadways.
Right, but you still don't comply, right?
We don't comply, right. We didn't, we didn't plan to put a berm between the street and the building, between the street and the parking lot, and...
So my recommendation is that we let Jim Higgins talk about this, because they do not comply with our buffer requirements, it needs relief, and so he should probably discuss it as part of his testimony with respect to the variance relief.
Yes, he...
Like the, right, so that's, that will be my recommendation.
Anything else?
Um, I, what?
On a typical service, do you have any, or at the end of a service, do you have any kind of like gathering with food or anything like that, any kind of events where like typical household garbage containers aren't going to be enough to contain what you're generating on those?
The imam, I mean, the witness testified last meeting, just prayer services and visiting the imam, and no, no, no parties or anything after.
And so the residential containers will be in the shed at all times until they're taken out and then brought back in, we're not going to be all over the place?
That's correct. I have one follow-up question, since you covered your report. Any other technical comments contained within the professional reports that relate to engineering that we didn't cover tonight, you would agree as a condition of approval to comply with?
Yes.
Okay.
And the drywall that you mentioned.
That's all we have of the engineering.
All right, board members, any questions for the engineer?
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DiFolco, you said there's no parking lot lighting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any lighting on the side of the building into the parking lot area?
Uh...
Because if I'm looking at this diagram correctly, from the furthest parking space to the building, you're looking at about 60 feet plus. That if it's dark, and it gets dark in the winter here early...
Yeah, the witness testified that the services are Friday from 12 to 3 and Sunday from 10 to 1. That's the only formal services, otherwise, if someone might visit the imam at night and just park there, but otherwise, that's the only formal activity.
Right. Formal as of right now.
Correct.
I was just looking ahead, because I think at the last minute we talked, at this meeting, we talked about possibly going up to 28 congregants...
Correct.
As, you know, a positive thing that we'd like to see encouraged there. I'm thinking with additional congregants or even the existing congregants, you want to have some form of lighting coming out of that parking lot in inclement weather,[1704.58] have some form of lighting coming out of that parking lot in inclement weather, darkness, et cetera, and I think it should be addressed somehow.
It may be light, I don't even know if it's light.
We could certainly agree to work with the board professionals, come up with a minimal lighting plan to at least cover that.
Fair enough.
We don't wanna overly lift parking lots.
Right, I just don't think having nothing is, is the appropriate response for this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I actually have a, just a question, not completely related to the engineer here, but if they ever decide, and I think I know the answer to this, to go into that other lot, they'd have to come back to us, correct?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, and our plan is actually to come back with a real building back there at some point.
Right, okay.
This is an interim step, but yes.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I had that in my head. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
I'm good.
Mr. Marilla?
Yeah, I mean, did we address the, the entrance location? I know Ms. Beam has it on her report, about Collector Road versus, what was it? Georgia Tavern's a Collector Road.
We didn't address it. I could talk.
Versus Windler.
We did not address that.
Versus Windler.
Versus Windler.
Right.
We just discussed it, but we can't.
Right, so, so presently, there is a driveway curb cut on Windler Road. There's actually two on this site. From my experience being, I don't live too far from this place, the, the speed limit on Georgia Tavern is higher than it is on Windler. Stop condition on Windler slows people down, so that as they approach the intersection, they're going not to forty miles an hour, but approaching a stop condition, whereas on Georgia Tavern, they're running to Route Nine, and it's a higher-speed road.
Except for the fact that people are gonna turn onto Windler off of Georgia Tavern Road, and bam, your driveway's gonna be there. So, it's not the safest condition at all.
Okay.
So, I, I agree. I, I think that that should definitely be evaluated, because I think it'd be safer to go out to Georgia Tavern, because you'd have to wait for a gap in the traffic. You come out onto Windler, someone's coming off of Georgia Tavern, they're gonna slam right into somebody. Because Windler is a supercut through, right, to, to Oakland Road that goes to Herbertsville, that goes down to, to Lakewood. It's, it's a cut through, and it, and people travel high speeds. They're gonna come off Georgia Tavern, make that right, slam on the gas, and it's not, like, I get it, on paper, it looks like the safer condition, but it's probably not the safer condition in this particular instance.
No, I agree.
Yeah, hundred percent.
All right, good. So, Mr. DeFalco, is that, is that something that can be accomplished without significant revisions to the plan?
We could come in off Georgia Tavern.
Okay. So, that's, we'll leave that to the board. Whatever the board prefers, we would do.
Is there a curb cut on? Is there a curb cut there?
No.
We'd have to do...
Oh, Windler, oh, not Georgia.
No, there's not a curb cut.
We'd have to close the old ones and put a new curb cut, yes.
Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, it can be done. It's just, you know, obviously more costly, but that's not something we weigh. You know, I think having a driveway approaching an intersection is probably a little bit better than wrapping around a curb, so like, you know, the site layout's gonna have to change a little bit, you know? They're gonna have to show the driveway coming through. There might be a tree or two that needs to get taken out on Georgia Tavern if that's where the board wants it, but, um, you know. I would just say, any of our recommendations about, like, split rail fence and landscaping to kinda mitigate any future unintended expansion, you know, we just have to make sure that that's still captured in any approval to make sure that's, you know, staying how it is.
We have to take into consideration too where the old septic was, if that's all filled in, you said.
Yeah, it's filled in. So, that's entirely up to the board and the board professionals, how you wanna handle it.
I've just got one more thing. I did speak to the fire marshal, and he's okay with the plan with, he did a revised letter. I think it's now has three comments, so we're on the same page, and he basically signed off on the plan.
Okay. Go ahead. Speaking of the Fire Bureau, they have an automatic fire alarm system maybe required pending windowless basement status and uniform construction code?
That's the old letter.
That's the old letter?
Mm-hmm.
We weren't furnished with that.
The letter dated Thursday, Thursday of last week.
What was that?
Thursday of last week. It's a new letter.
Okay.
That just came out. That, that comment was taken off, but there is no basement.
Okay, it's, it wasn't given to us as an updated one, so. And then understood that the building is required to be inspected annually?
Yes, and the first comment was revised. His answer was, we're gonna post no parking signage throughout the site in lieu of striping because of the gravel surface, and he's gonna place the number and location of the signs.
And no combustible landscaping mulch within eighteen inches?
Correct. He said we could use rubber mulch, but not wood mulch.
Rubber mulch.
I'd rather use, you know, stone than rubber mulch.
Yeah, we could use stones, but no wood mulch.
So, you're not gonna do rubber?
Or wood within, I think it's three feet of the building or two feet, whatever the memo says. Eighteen inches?
Well, you can't have wood within eighteen inches.
Right, so we'll do stones, and then we could do wood beyond that.
That's all I have for now.
All right, Mr. Fieri, we'll hear Mr. Higgins then.
Mr. Higgins, thanks.
All right. Don't need this.
Good evening.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last, please.
James W. Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S.
Jim, we're seeking to have you qualified as a professional planner. Would you place your credentials on the record?
I am a licensed professional planner in the state. I've been licensed for over forty years.
We accept the credentials, sir.
All right, Jim, you've, you've heard the testimony from Mr. DeFalco. You understand the variance relief that's required because it's a conditional use and we do not meet all of the conditions. Can you place on the record the proofs to support that variance relief and also the buffer variance in this?
That, yeah, yeah, I can vary easily. I think I can do that. The D3 variance is different than a D1 variance. The courts have said that the proofs for a D3 variance, since the use is permitted, it's almost like looking at the negative impact and not looking at the positive reasons, because the negative becomes the positive in this instance. And you have to look at the intent of the ordinance in creating the standards for the, for the conditional use. And quite frankly, when you look at the ordinance and you look at the standards that are being required, it's clear that the ordinance was geared towards much more intensive uses than what is being proposed here. This is a very low-intensity use. It's basically taking small existing residents, using a portion of it as the house of worship and a portion of it as a residence, which would be the imam's residence. So, when you look, for example, at the minimum setback from the street of the building, that's, first of all, it's an existing condition. It can't reasonably be changed. And the fact that it's such a low-intensity use, whether the building is setback forty-two point six feet from Georgia Tavern Road and thirty-nine point nine feet from Windler, or if the dedication is made rather than an easement, then that would be reduced to thirty-one, thirty feet from Georgia Tavern Road and thirty-one feet from Windler. Again, those are existing conditions, and it's not gonna change anything that exists right now, and the likelihood of either of those roads being further expanded physically is, it's very unlikely. It's possible, but it's very unlikely. But you do have just a very low-intensity use, and it's not like a large building that would have a large congregation in it with a very large parking lot that would have an impact on the roads and the surrounding area. You have a small building and a small parking lot, line spaces, maybe sometime in the future expanded to fourteen, but still, it's not a fifty-space lot or a hundred-space lot or a two-hundred-space lot. And that's really what the ordinance is geared towards in terms of the size of the structure, in terms of the setbacks. Again, you have a very small structure, and the setbacks are geared towards scale and geared towards a much larger structure than what exists on the site at this time. With regard to the variance for the off-street parking and, and the buffering for the off-street parking, again, it's a very small parking lot. It's going to be buffered appropriately. It doesn't quite meet the ordinance requirement for a buffer, but again, it's, it's still going to be buffered and screened from view from the road, so it won't be readily visible. And the, the times that that would be occupied are very limited. I think it's two days a week for like a three-hour period each day. So, there wasn't gonna be any substantial negative impact, and again, the site can support the use despite the need for that deviation. And then the final one is that the location on a collector or arterial road as shown on the master plan, and again, what's being proposed?
We've addressed that.
What?
Yeah, now moving.
Yeah, we are, so we're gonna move that, so that, that goes away. So, it's only those two deviations from the conditional use requirements. And again, when I look at this, I think the site can clearly accommodate the use despite the need for those deviations because of the fact it's a very low-intensity use, both in terms of the amount of time that's being spent on the site for the use and the, the number of congregants and the number of parking spaces. With regard to the overall buffer requirement in the ordinance, the fifty-foot buffer is required. The applicant is proposing to provide a fifty-foot buffer in most areas and to work with the staff as far as increasing landscaping in that buffer area to be satisfactory. There are some areas where structures are in the buffer, and that can't be avoided.
So, well, I'm gonna stop you right there. What structures are in the buffer currently? Because we have required applicants in the past to remove accessory structures that are in the buffer. So, what, what structures are in the buffer?
The, the structure is, is the residence, is, is the building, the principal building along the street.
That's it.
That's within fifty feet. That's it. There are no accessory structures in the buffer area.
The shed, we're relocating, so that won't be...
Yeah.
So, that's gonna be removed?
Relocated.
Relocated, so that it's not in the buffer area.
I mean, Sal, you've been here multiple times, as has, as has Jim. We don't grant this relief, like, easily, so...
Yeah, and if we were building a new building, we wouldn't even have asked for that.
I mean, we've had applicants that come, have come here with existing structures and still not granted that relief. So, this is a, this is a, I think, Jim, you're gonna need to do a little bit more on testimony, because we do not grant relief for buffer, for the buffer encroachment, even for existing structures. Say, it's there, it is gonna stay there, and that's, it is what it is, you're gonna have to dig a little deeper, 'cause, and, and I also wanna caution you, a single-family house and a house of worship is not the same intensity. So, you're gonna have to do a little bit more on your testimony to justify that relief.
That's fine. Yeah, the, the buffer relief that's required is along the streets. It's not adjacent to residential uses and adjacent properties.
That's not the point.
I, I think that is the point, though.
No, it's not the point. We have required buffers as this board has, we've required that buffer across Route Nine. So, this is a lot more, like, intense than across two lanes of traffic, a barrier, two lanes of traffic, a shoulder, and Route Nine. We've required this buffer across Route Nine. So, I, I, you're gonna need to dig deeper. I'm sorry.
I mean, I think what Jen is saying is, you know, you, without knocking down the structure, you can't change the location of the structure, right? But you certainly have the ability to provide more landscaping plantings to provide that buffer and to mitigate the change in the use from a residential structure to something non-residential.
Well, that is what I was saying, is that the applicant is willing to work with the professionals, the board's professionals, to provide that adequate buffering, because you can't change the distance, but you can increase the intensity of the buffering in terms of the number of plant materials, a possibility of a berm in that area. And that's exactly what I was saying, and maybe it was misinterpreted when I said that. But the applicant, it's not on the plan now, but the applicant is willing to work with the professionals to provide an adequate buffer along the street line, since the building cannot reasonably be used, be moved.
And we did, and Ms. Shari did do a report with landscape suggestions, which we agreed to comply with, but we also stipulate that if there's additional buffering to mitigate the lack of a buffer, we'd certainly work with the board professionals.
Jen?
I mean, I get it, but the removal of that back lot for the quote-unquote "future house of worship" for this, I understand that they're looking to, like, incrementally go that route, but I, I, I'm struggling with the testimony. I don't agree that going from a single-family house to a house of worship is, is a de minimis increase in intensity. Even at, like, when you have a, like, a single-family house, you're talking about four, five, six residents, you have a house of worship, there's a lot more people coming to this, to this location. So, I don't agree that it's de minimis, or, like, I, I, I am struggling with what's been presented. I don't disagree with what they're proposing. I'm just struggling with the testimony that I've been provided. And then on top of which, we know that lot in the back that was removed from the application is ultimately, when it gets to a certain point, gonna become a, a house of worship, which I have no problem with, but like, at what point? So, are we talking about twelve people? Are we talking about thirty people? Because thirty people coming to a single-family house is different from a single-family house. So, I don't understand it, and I have not been provided the information to be comfortable with it.
We were told twelve to fourteen during the first testimony.
I, I get it, so that's what I'm asking.
So, we were, we said that's currently, but it would be up to twenty-eight max at the peak, is what the testimony is.
So, thirty-eight peep?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry, Sal, I'm sorry. I apologize.
And, and we can't, there's no prediction on if and when that back will ever be developed, because the congregation may not grow, they may not raise the money. This is, this is what they're gonna live with until such time as they can't live with it.
So, I get that. So, my concern is what we've been provided testimony-wise is that it's de minimis.
I have to object to that, because I never said that, and I never compared what's being proposed here to a single-family residence. I compared what's being proposed here to what was anticipated by the ordinance for a conditional use for a house of worship, and that it's much less intensive than a traditional house of worship. It's definitely more intensive than a single family, and I never, never meant to insinuate that, and I never said that.
I, I apologize, Jim. So, my concern is, is that the relief on the buffering, which I get, the house is where it's at, right? But that's a single-family house. You bring twenty-eight congregants, that's more intense than a single-family house. So, I'm not saying that there's not justification. I'm just saying that I just need a little bit more. So, I agree with Charlie. So, if we can increase the buffering, like, the, the intensification of the buffer landscaping, 'cause I'm not asking them to take down the building. That's crazy, right? So, the building is where it is. But if we can increase the landscaping, and honestly, I'm more concerned about the Windler side than the Georgia Tavern side, because...
And we're gonna change that ingress, egress on that side, right?
Correct. So, if they can work with Shari to make sure that we're significantly buffered and whatever parking they're proposing is significantly buffered, I'm not saying that, like, I'm not opposing it, I'm just saying that they need a little bit more to make sure that this is not gonna be, there's not gonna be a negative impact on the surrounding single-family homes. And honestly, I've driven past this, this site a million times. I didn't even know it was there. So, I'm not saying there, there are a negative impact, but to bring thirty people for whatever, however long, let's just increase the buffering and make sure that it's not gonna be a negative impact. That's, I agree with Charlie.
And we agree. And Mr., I guess Mr. Higgins, to close the loop on that from a planning point of view, if the buffering is adequate to, to clearly buffer this from the public, would that help in supporting the variance relief that you saw?
Absolutely.
As long as it's not in the side triangle.
Yes, that's right, absolutely. It couldn't be in the side.
They, I was just about to ask that.
Yeah, that's why I said it, the applicant should work with the board's professionals, 'cause the engineer should also be involved, and I think Jen should be involved also in the other.
And Shari. I mean, Shari's a critical component here.
Yeah, yeah, very, very, I, I meant in addition to Shari.
Yes, hundred percent.
We have no, no issue, Mr. Chairman, with where we're complying.
Other than that, I have no exception to what he's saying, but I just wanna make sure that it's adequately screened to make sure it's not gonna be an impact to the neighbors.
Got it.
We agree.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Do you have more?
Nope, I think that's it.
The board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Higgins?
Just getting back to the parking spaces, so we're down, we went from fourteen to nine.
Yes.
And, and nine parking spaces is good for, like, what's that formula for how many people?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight seats, the nine parking spaces is adequate according to your ordinance.
And and nine parking spaces is good for, like, what's that formula for how many people?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight seats, the nine parking spaces is adequate according to your ordinance. But the applicant has said he would like to sometime in the future expand it to fourteen, if it's necess- if necessary.
Okay, and we are still with the twenty, twenty-three prayer spaces, as per the plans?
I'm sorry, the what?
Pr- they're called prayer spaces. I'm I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the Muslim, um.
Twenty-eight, I think, was the, the number.
There was, on the plans, there's twenty-three prayer spaces, and then there was one, two, three, four, five. But we said the sister's prayer room is no longer gonna be.
That's correct.
That's right.
So, those, those prayer spaces are being taken away.
They, yes, they would put, if if there's, if there's going to be twenty-eight people praying, they're all gonna pray in that main room.
So, there'll be twenty-eight spaces in the main room.
Twenty-eight prayer spaces are on the plan, twenty-eight spaces.
Twenty, includes the sisters.
All they did was, they had twenty-three in the main room, and they had five in what was formerly the caretaker, they took those five and moved them into the main room, so.
Oh, so now, so there will be twenty-eight, correct. All right, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Martins.
I'm gonna make a motion open to public.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public for any questions or comments regarding this application. Anyone wishing to do so, please come up, use the podium, you'll have to give your name and address and be sworn in.
We'll have to go into the side of the building.
Yeah, that's right.
But how do you have addresses? Not seeing anyone from public?
Motion to close.
We got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Eileen, we're closed for public.
Public portion of this hearing is now closed.
Okay, Andy, I'm sure you advised the, uh, you know, there's only six of us, all right, so.
Yes, we understand.
Mr. Alfieri?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, we would like to proceed with the vote. Uh, we've, you know, again, as Mr. Higgins indicates, it's conditional use, not a D-one use variance relief. We believe that now that we've agreed to address all of the comments of the board professionals, um, we have mitigated any impact that the the three relief requires, and we request that the board grant the approval, subject to all of those conditions.
All right, let me see how the board is doing here. Um, do we wanna have seven? You think we should? Do we need seven? Okay. They think that we should have seven?
Understood.
Okay.
So, when's the next meeting, um, Eileen?
Our next meeting is August twenty-sixth, which is two weeks from tonight.
I'm gonna be away.
After that, it's September the ninth.
Mr. Alfieri?
Yes.
Can we hear from Mr. Sodik one more time? The board member has a question.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for coming up again. Um, I think last time you said in testimony that there will be no outdoor activity at all, correct? Yes. Okay. Um, currently, is, is the property being used as a house of prayer? Is it? I mean, we're not using it right now. Uh, you were told not to use it until we show up, we come before you. So, that's what we're here for. Okay, so. Hope that we can get it. Only 'cause I just, I I try to, um, get an understanding of an application, especially when I don't understand, and, you know, the Muslim religion, so I try to teach myself some things. Um, so I went on to, you you have a Facebook page, correct? Yes. So, on that Facebook page, it appears that it is a, um, place of, place of prayer right now. No, we don't have it. Okay, so. Someone put it out there, but, no, we don't. It's your official.
You did have, you used it previously, and you were told to stop.
Yeah, we did, and they, they were told by the township to stop, I didn't know. Okay, that's, that's what I was asking, because in April of twenty-twenty-three, you you did have an outdoor event that was, um, promoted as a barbecue, a picnic, and a place where children can come and play soccer. On the bigger field. Well, they had it at Fort Windler. I know, but, uh, they're all connected. From the back, it opens into the bigger field. Oh, so it is a field back there? Yeah, we have a soccer field on the field. I put that on there thirty years ago. Oh, okay. So, it's still there. No, there's no activities, outdoor activities on the small property where the house is. Okay, so any out, any activities, it would be already in a place that is established? Yes. To hold such an event? Oh, it's a big, big lot. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there separate parking for the soccer field?
No, it's so huge that we don't use it as well. Like, if we have picnics once a year or twice, people go and park on the grass, it's gated. So, they go through the gates, we close the gates, it's an.
So, they're not going through the existing property?
No, no, it's separated from it. It's probably five hundred feet away from this, uh, small building.
With a separate entrance?
Separate entrance.
Okay.
It's gated area.
Thank you.
If the next meeting, I'm sorry, any other question? Thank, thank. If the next meeting's only for a vote, is that what we're gonna do, Mr. Chairman, no testimony? I could have someone come and cover it, 'cause if it's, if it's only a vote.
That's all it'll be?
Yes, that's all.
So, when is that?
Everything's concluded, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I mean, unless anyone has questions, they want somebody to come back.
When, when I first got this, uh, property.
I mean, a lot of the issues will be buttoned up by then, that we've left open here?
Yes.
The professionals, so that's, I think that was a stipulation. The only thing is, Jose's not gonna be here, so we mean that we would all want to be here.
Jose will not be here on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, the twenty-sixth, well, uh, my whole family goes away. I was gonna send my son here, but he's coming with me, so we, whatever the meeting is after that.
September ninth.
If that's okay with the board.
September ninth works.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's for a vote only?
Okay, so anyone that's here for case number BA twenty-four dash zero six, Turkish American Religious Foundation, this application is being carried to September ninth with no further notice, expiration date, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Sal, again, have revised plans to us before that?
We're not gonna provide testimony, so it's up to you.
I'm just saying, like, like, it'd be rather compliance anyway.
Assuming we get approved. Um, we'll talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Hey, Sal.
It's one less variance, yeah.
You're, you are, but you're not, 'cause if you, well, you're getting carried, yes, you would be. 'Cause I was gonna say, if somebody else gets carried, they go ahead of you, but if you carry tonight, you, it's up to you. Okay.
I don't think that's sneaking. She's leaving in plain sight.
Okay, up in front of the board, case number BA twenty-three dash twenty-four, Christopher Kapskaskis. This is a bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with septic on an undersized lot, application of Christopher Kapskaskis as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system on an undersized lot in AREE two zone. The applicant also proposes an associated driveway, private well, dry well, septic system, concrete walk, and covered patio on premises known as block one eighty-three, lot sixty-two, five fifty-five Brickyard Road. This application was partially heard on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, when it was carried to August twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, with no further notice. Expiration date, August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Sir.
Good evening, Chair, Board, uh.
Excuse me, before you proceed, I just wanted to let you know, I did certi- I can certify, I saw the video, 'cause I was not technically at the meeting, so. Glad to sign anything.
You do, just one second.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Uniglick, on behalf of the applicant, with our Uniglick Room Practical Climate, uh, Sign X M E, is Mr. Wilder with Morgan Engineering. Um, we did testify at the last hearing on May twentieth, so we'll keep our comments brief tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilder. Uh, good evening. Uh, would you like to swear me in again, or?
No, the witness was sworn in the last, and he was qualified.
Charlie, you got this one, right? Okay.
Does it changes for us, Mr. Wilder?
Absolutely. And and I even prepared an exhibit, uh, for this evening, if you don't mind pulling up Exhibit A fifteen, which is a house comparison exhibit. The colors are not quite as vivid as I was hoping, um, but effectively, what I've done here is I've overlaid the house that was proposed in May of this year before the board, and then what we're proposing here this evening. So, again, it's a little bit tough to see, and I apologize, I should have used more contrasting colors, but this line is a red line, and that represents the home that was previously presented to this board. And the blue line, which for almost all intents and purposes is inside the red line, is what we're proposing here this evening, which is a smaller footprint and a slightly smaller home.
So, do you comply with the coverage?
We do not. We still need a building coverage and impervious coverage variance, but we have reduced the coverages. And I'll summarize all the, all the changes that we've made. Um, so, the the most significant change was related to the side yard setback. Previously, we were at twenty-point-six feet on this side, and if you recall, there's a detention basin in the rear of us, and because of the shape of the property, the most, uh, nearest resident is really to the north over here on lot, on lot sixty-three. So, we now comply with the side yard setback, we are providing a thirty-foot side yard setback to the north. So, we've completely eliminated that variance. The rear yard setback was increased slightly, it was increased from twenty-two-point-four feet to twenty-three-point-one feet. So, we slightly lessen the variance, but again, I'll note that to the, to the east of us is a detention basin line. Um, the building coverage was reduced from sixteen-point-three percent to twelve-point-seven percent, and the impervious coverage was reduced from twenty-two-point-four percent to eighteen-point-two percent. And effectively, all the changes result are a function of the house being reduced in size. The driveway and the covered porch are relatively the same, it was a reduction in the size of the house. You may remember that when we were here before, uh, we were talking about a house that had thirty-four hundred square feet of livable space. That is no longer the proposal. The proposal is for slightly over twenty-six hundred square feet of space. Uh, there is a basement, which is gonna be your typical basement, it's not to have bedrooms or anything like that, it's not designed for that. And on the second floor, there is some attic space proposed, just provides some element of storage. The reason we have that sort of unfinished attic space that's accessible is we realize that we are asking for a building coverage and impervious coverage variance, so at this point, we're not proposing any accessory structures. We wanna use the proposed garage, as well as that's, that unfinished attic on the second story, as the real storage for this property, not to further increase our building or impervious coverage. Some additional, uh, plant changes that we've made, if you don't mind going to the revised variance plan, which is A thirteen?
What's, what's the name of the file again, I'm sorry?
A thirteen, the revised variance plan, it's, uh, variance and septic design plan, two sheets. Um, so, this is again the revised variance plan with the slightly smaller home, and this has all the engineering detail, the septic, the dry well, et cetera. Um, so, other changes that were made that don't necessarily impact any of the, uh, bulk requirements or setbacks are, we shifted the septic system farther to the south, so what that allowed us to do is actually, uh, I understand that this board is always very sensitive to septics in the front yard. Um, by having the septic further from the house, we have more room to grade, so that we can ensure that the septic system is effectively level with the surrounding grade, this will not be a mounded system. The soils here are exceptional soils with very deep groundwater, the the septic being quote-unquote "in the front yard" will have no visual impact on this property.
But wait a minute, is that not in the front yard?
It is in the front yard. What I'm saying is that the septic system, the the concern that I've had when I've been before this board before is the septic systems that are mounded up that detract from the aesthetics of a neighborhood. This will, that will not be the case here, so the.
Do we have the grading plan to show that? Do we have it?
Another change that we've made, if you don't mind going back to the other view. Um, previously, the dry well was slightly closer to lot sixty-three. When we pulled the house further to the south, I was able to pull the dry well further from that adjacent property. Um, to, again, we're really at this point maintaining the existing elevations and grades on that common property line to the north. Um, one of the, one of Mr. Kungla's comments were that we eliminated the swale. There sort of already is an existing swale on that side of the property, and by shifting everything to the south, we're able to preserve some of that land. So, we can accentuate the swale, or my intent is really to reduce our limited disturbance to the north to prevent any, you know, impacts onto that adjacent property. Uh, 'cause again, that is the most, uh, the nearest adjacent homeowner.
Charlie?
And? Yeah, so, I don't take exception with any of the representations that I've made so far. I think, you know, what stopped this application the first time there before the board was concerns about the scale of the development, you know, uh, in rela- relation to, you know, adjacent developments and what's already in the neighborhood.
The neighbor, the neighbors, yeah?
Cor- correct. So, a couple of things that I wanna point out, Mr. Wilder, applicant's proposing a full basement for the entirety of the structure.
That's correct.
So, the location of the septic system, you know, uh, there's a different requirement, whether there's a slab on grade versus a basement. If there's a slab on grade, the septic system could be closer to the, uh, subject property's dwelling, and then further away from the neighboring properties, so that's something I wanna point out for the board's consideration. And you heard Mr. Wilder say they reduced the footprint or the livable area for the dwelling from thirty-four hundred square feet to just over twenty-six hundred square feet. You know, I went on the MLS and looked at the properties in proximity here, you've got to the, I believe it's, I wanna say the, uh, north here, you got sixty-four oh one, sixty-three, and then to the south, sixty-one oh two, sixty-one oh two. The livable, sixty-one oh one, I apologize. So, I'll just, in that order, the livable area on the tax records, you've got, uh, sixty-four oh one, a three-bedroom with just under fifteen hundred square feet of livable area. Sixty-three, you've got a three-bedroom with just under eighteen hundred square feet of livable area. Sixty-one oh two, a four-bedroom, just over twenty-five hundred square feet, and then sixty-one oh one, four-bedroom, just over twenty-two hundred square feet. So, you know, they're proposing a four-bedroom, you've got a mix of three and four bedrooms, but, you know, you're proposing larger than any of the four other structures that are immediately adjacent to you, and you're asking for a building coverage and a lot coverage variance.
Exactly.
So, I just wanna give the board that context.
Okay.
I only had one other element to point out on the revised plan, if you don't mind, uh, zooming back to the design. Um, one other benefit with us shifting everything to the south is you'll notice the adjacent properties to the north, their driveway is very, in very close proximity to that common property line. By shifting everything to the south, we just provided a little bit more separation between the two driveways, not necessarily that it was an issue before, but one benefit to shifting everything to the south. So, I just wanted to, that that sort of gives the overall summary of the changes that we've made, um, to the design.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that, once again, the applicant understand. understand the lot coverage and building coverage requirement in the zone. You're in a six-acre zone, or is it-
Two.
Two-acre zone, I'm, I apologize. And you're what, twenty, little less than twenty thousand square feet. The homes immediately around you are less than what you're proposing, and many of those lots are compliant in area. So, I don't really know how you're going to justify the, the compliance. I mean, we'll listen to the testimony, but I'm here to tell you that it's a, it's an uphill climb for you to, to justify the, the building coverage and the lot coverage when the other surrounding properties, the building footprints are less than what you're proposing. So, I, I just, I think you guys should take it, take a closer look. I know this is the second time you've been back here, but at the end of the day, you're, you need relief for a number of things, including the area for the septic, but so, I think that that needs to be revisited, honestly.
I appreciate certainly Ms. Beam's comments, and the board was gracious enough last time to allow us a little bit of a recess to talk with our client, and we did have quite a, quite a back and forth in dialogue with the board. I tried to, to get you guys to give me a number, you certainly weren't willing to give me a number, um, as much as I, I pushed and pulled. Um, but what we, what we provided, uh, we thought providing a four-bedroom home was important. Um, there, there certainly are, you know, adjacent structures that are three-bedrooms, um, new construction, we thought providing a four bed, a fourth bedroom was important. Um, so, and, and the fourth bedroom, in some respects, is sort of the driving force behind the size of the homes, um, and, and the property is very uniquely shaped. Um, so, what we tried to do was select a house that sort of has, as you'll notice, has multiple jogs that really follows the shape of the property. This is not a, you know, a quote-unquote custom home where we, we can sort of, uh, adjust it in the identical shape of the property, so what we've tried to do is propose something that we think is appropriate for the area, but also provides, uh, new home construction consistent with the standards. Um, if, if the board certainly still has issues with the size of the home, um, it's something-
I'm certainly, I'm certainly not opining on the number of bedrooms, you're perfectly entitled to a four-bedroom home, but the coverage continues to be an issue, so I, I would maybe advise the chairman, maybe take a little bit of a recess, allow them to-
Didn't we talk about the, the covered porch at the time?
Well, that goes to the coverage, the, total impervious coverage.
Right, right.
The, but the building coverage is also in excess, but barely. So, we, like, can we give them a minute to, like, discuss it? You're barely over, barely.
And, uh, certainly, I would, I would appreciate a, a quick recess, um, but I-
Right.
I will indicate that we did talk about the covered porch at the last meeting, and that was something that we said, you know, we don't necessarily need and we can give back, but several members of the board thought it was an aesthetic benefit to that, considering you have an undersized lot and you may not have a, a lot of room for accessory structures. So, we, we can certainly have a quick conversation with our client. Um, the porch is, the covered porch is something that we, we could reasonably get rid of. I don't think it, I think the home, the size of the home, the living space is more important than that covered porch, um, but I just wanted to relay that we're-
Yeah, so to give the board some clarity, right? So, their, I think building covers are twelve point seven percent, uh, proposed, or twelve, maximum of twelve percent is permitted, so that point seven percent equates to like a hundred thirty square feet. That covered porch is around two-hundred-and-sixty square feet, that's included in the building coverage calculation, so that would eliminate that variance.
That eliminates that variance, yeah.
Yeah, they're over three percent on impervious coverage, that roughly is around five hundred square feet plus or minus in that range, so you're taking out another two-hundred-and-sixty square feet, so that, it'll eliminate the building, it won't completely eliminate the impervious coverage, but, you know, certainly is an improvement more conforming with the-
Okay, and then we could open up to public and see what the public sees as well. All right, let's take five. Eileen?
The board will now take a recess, they'll be back at eight twenty-five.
Okay.
Thanks, our client, and I appreciate that, being afforded that opportunity. Uh, if we eliminate the covered porch on the south side of the home, we would reduce our building coverage to eleven point three percent, so we'd be a conforming application with respect to building coverage. We have no issue with that. There's also the ability for us to actually even slightly narrow our driveway. Right now, the driveway's a little bit oversized at twenty-one point three feet wide. We can narrow it and still be consistent with the residential site improvement standards. By eliminating the porch and slightly narrowing the driveway, we can reduce our impervious coverage to sixteen point one percent. We would still be one point one percent over the impervious coverage, um, and that equates to about two-hundred-and-five square feet, um, which, again, is still a variance, but, uh, I would say it's a de minimis, uh, exceedance. I'm not sure Ms. Beam would agree with-
No, I, I think that's fair.
That's fair.
I think that's fair, yes.
Just to clarify, when you say narrow the driveway, what's the width you're proposing?
Right now, it's twenty-one point three, and then we go down to eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet, okay.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure to park-
Okay. Board members, do we have any questions for this applicant? No, can we open it to public then?
Are you all done?
Yep, 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 yes, unless the board has questions.
Then, um-
We have a motion open to public?
We should open to public.
We got a second?
Second.
One favor?
Hi.
Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened this hearing up for members of the public that have questions or comments regarding this application. If so, please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and be sworn in.
Andy?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and give your address.
My name is Todd Weiner, my address is five forty-nine Brickyard Road. Similar to the, to the list you had, I have the twelve closest houses to that lot. Of these twelve closest houses, the largest house is twenty-three hundred square feet that sits on two acres. Out of these twelve houses, eight of them are under two thousand square feet. This is the smallest lot looking to build the biggest house. It's not a reasonable request, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. We, we live in the house suburbs because we, we love it. We want a little distance between ourselves and our neighbors. We don't want to be a city and build on top of each other. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, uh, Dan DeLaGatti, live at five-five-seven, so the-
Before you go on, sir, sorry. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, state your name and, and your address.
Dan DeLaGatti, I live at the, towards the left at five-five-seven. Um, last time we spoke, going from seven hundred square feet to a little over three thousand, I appreciate them shrinking the lot. I'll be the first to say, I'm all for building a house, tired of looking at a hole in the ground, but they went from twenty feet to thirty feet from my property line, where the previous house was, I don't know the exact distance, but it was close to fifty. I'm just looking for a little privacy for myself and my family, um, as well as the water retention, the dry well, and the air conditioning units are on that side. So, not only will I hear whoever is living there, their conversations, but their AC units and their water will be draining into my property.
So, go ahead.
Sure, um, so, I mean, first, from a side setback standpoint, we're compliant with the required side yard setback to Mr. DeLaGatti's property. Uh, so, from a privacy standpoint, we are consistent with the ordinance, even though we're substantially undersized zone from a setback standpoint. Um, as it relates to stormwater runoff, we're not allowed to discharge any runoff, stormwater runoff towards Mr. DeLaGatti's property, and in fact, we have a dry well just to prevent that. Um, if the concerns are with the AC units on the northern side of the property, we can very easily flip them to the eastern side of the property towards the detention basin. Um, we, we have no issue with that. And then, at that point, the AC units themselves would meet the principal building setback to the side yard. Um, so, the, the changes that we made to this plan were in an effort to minimize the impact to the nearest property owner, which happens to be Mr. DeLaGatti, and by doing, by moving everything ten feet to the south, I think we've accomplished that.
Does that, Mr. DeLaGatti?
I'm sorry?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it still doesn't take away the fact this house is pretty large. They advised last meeting that they would go from four to three bedrooms based on the request of the board. I understand that wasn't done, but all, all I'm asking for is privacy, that's it. And you can see my driveway, which I can't move, I can't move my driveway or my house over, so I want to be able to enjoy my yard without listening to conversations right next door.
So, Mr. Wilder, I understand that you, you meet the side yard setback, so regardless of the size of the house, it could be a thousand-square-foot house in the same location. You understand that, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder, can you stipulate on behalf of the applicant that they would put a fence and some kind of landscaping along the, along the property line to provide additional, like, privacy and buffering?
We have no issue with that. Um, I, my recommendation would be, would be landscaping, if the board would rather have a fence, we'll, we'll install that along the-
I mean, I would ask what the, what, what would you prefer, sir?
Uh-
I mean, there, a house is going to go here, so what would you prefer? A fence?
I want the house here, I want the number, and I want the house.
I understand, so would you prefer a, a fence, or just a fence?
You want a white vinyl fence, six feet high?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that would-
Okay, so that's what I think we should recommend.
We have no issue with that.
He's right next door.
Mr. DeLaGatti, those are, those are arms, armpits?
Yes.
Is that your property?
Yes, sir.
So, those are armpits, it's all right?
Yes, and we went over this the last time, but with now no land or nothing there, a lot of deer are coming and eating, and so tomorrow, they could be gone. That white fence?
So, I think a fence would probably be helpful.
Six-foot vinyl fence.
Just don't, don't extend it into the front yard setback.
Correct.
Does that help?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your name and your address.
Sheila Gelsamine, five forty-eight Brickyard Road.
Could you just spell your last name for me?
Yes, G E L S O M I N E.
Perfect, thank you.
And Sheila's with the E I.
Yeah.
I'm across the street from this property, been there, oh, God, thirty-one years, thirty-five, so I'm the corner piece, so you got my corner there. Um, this whole new development came in after we bought. Across the street was Betty, she had a house that was about seven-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet. The owners at one time decided that, you know, maybe we'll put a second story on, that would increase it. Now, you're going from seven-hundred-and-thirty-six square-foot house to a twenty-six-hundred-square-foot house. It's going to be huge. I don't know if you've driven by this property, but it's a pizza slice. It's not very big, it backs up to a, to, uh, detention pond. Now, my question is, if he's meeting the requirements of this area, it, within the proposed area for septic, well, and house, he is. Okay, my property is two lots. I'm lot nine and lot nine-point-oh-one. So, that side piece you see there, when we bought the house, we were told that was an unbuildable lot, that we could never put anything on there. The only thing we could do was join it to our piece of property, which my mother strongly recommended, but we didn't do it, we kept it separate. Now, are you telling me that I will be able to do the same thing?
No, because you, because you're, because the lots are undersized and under common ownership, so they, they join by-
I could sell separately.
So, at the end of the day, you have two undersized lots under the same ownership. There is statute that makes them join independently. This is an independent lot, so it has nothing to do with it.
So, it's white-
But if you want to come back here-
And do a ver- no, see, I wouldn't do that.
To come for a variance to build on an undersized lot, you're more than welcome, but at the end of the day, it's an undersized lot, and they're under common ownership currently, so I don't know why they haven't joined, to be honest.
They're on the same tax line, because I came years ago and discussed-
Nine and nine-point-oh-one, if they're under the same ownership and they're, but there's, they're undersized, they would join, right?
Jen, I'm going to suggest we don't talk about a hypothetical application that Sheila has. Yeah, like, it's not really appropriate, but you could certainly, uh, explain whatever circumstances you want about your view of the application.
Right, I was just-
Yeah.
Going, moving forward, would I be able to do the same thing, and you're telling me I cannot?
So-
You can come for a variance, but you just told me I couldn't because it was the same ownership.
So, just to clarify again, right, so you don't have any pending application for anything with the municipality, so like, we can't comment on some-
No, I do not, because I was told it's an unbuildable lot, yeah.
Yeah, so, if you, I would recommend you engage your own engineer, you can certainly-
I don't want to do that, I'm just saying, is there a potential, let's say, if we sell the house, there's somebody that could buy the place and do what he's-
They're going to have to do whatever proper due diligence they would need to do as part of obtaining that property to figure out whether or not they could build on it, like-
But if he's under the, what you call, he's now Chris is under, he's under the lot size for the house, he's meeting all the requirements.
For this, he's here for a variance because the lot is undersized, right? As part of that, he needs forty thousand square feet because the lot's not serviced by septic, which that's-
Right.
-what the variance is that they need. They need the building and the lot coverage, that you've heard them provide testimony, they're reducing, removing the porch, so they're going to now comply with the building coverage, they just need an impervious coverage variance.
What about the septic? Because we were always told you need an acre.
So, so, as a condition of any board approval, right, we don't have purview on the septic system as far as approving it. We can see it on the plan, so we can see the impact of development. Ultimately, they have to get a Monmouth County Board of Health approval for that septic system, they got to get test pits that are going to be witnessed by Board of Health, they're going to have to satisfy all separation requirements, the property lines, adjacent wells, etc.
So, this could still be turned down?
That's a condition of the approval. If they can't get Monmouth County Board of Health approval, they would have to return back to this board, and they'd have to run sanitary sewer to the site, so.
Oh, that, that's not going to happen.
Like I said, it's, that's an outside agency approval, they wouldn't be able to build on a lot until they obtain Monmouth County Board of Health approval for that septic system.
Okay, so it's now up to the Monmouth County septic system. It's not up to you guys.
We cannot deny, deny an application for not having an outside agency approval at the time of them hearing with the board, we can make it a condition of the approval.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's gathering a lot of attention. Like a warehouse.
Andy?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and provide your address.
Michelle Sala, and I live on five-five-nine, which is the house right next door to Danny, but we own the house, we own Danny's house, and we put, um, the additions on, and we were told we couldn't build out or towards his house, forward or backwards because of the property, because of the, um, size of the property. So, I'm just saying that, how does that-
Charlie?
One go for one and not the other.
So, I don't know which property you're speaking of, you, you own lot sixty-four oh-one?
Danny's.
So, the gentleman that came with previously?
Correct.
So, you don't own it anymore, and he's the owner of that property?
Correct.
And what was the representation that you made?
No, I'm just saying that we built two additions on that house, we weren't allowed to go forward, backward, sideways, only two.
Did you come to a board, or you just go to the township for permits?
Um, I, it was way back, I don't know, how long ago was that? I don't even know.
Yeah, so, so, if you were to propose something that was completely conforming with the ordinance, right, you can go and get a zoning permit and get a plot plan to build it. If you were exacerbating a setback or impervious coverage, right, you would be at the board, which is where they're here now to seek relief of the lot area and now impervious coverage, so.
Okay, so, so Danny could do that too, though, right?
He would have to file an application, come, come to the board, so.
Okay.
But, like I said, that's a hypothetical, that's not what we're considering as-
No, no, I know that, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but[1754.21]
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and provide your address.
Sal Gorgiulo, ten Red Fox Road, Freehold slash Howl. Good?
We're good, sir.
All right, I live on the street directly behind the house. I'm four houses from this piece of land that's in question. I'm in favor of a house being replaced.
Okay. So all you wanted to say, sir?
Yeah, I really want the thing replaced because it looks terrible. I drive past it every day. It's an eyesore. And my house, the house next door to me just sold for one point two million. And I'm considering maybe taking my four children and leaving because of other situations. And I want to make sure that the properties all around me are in very, very good condition and-
Understood, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, can we get some planning testimony to wrap this up?
Sure.
I mean, I think he gave us planning testimony. Did you not?
At the last hearing I did, just to quickly summarize-
I just want, Jen?
Yeah, I think he should just summarize what he provided to us the last time.
You have to close public first.
All right, let's close the public.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, we're closed to public, Eileen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So relative to the planning testimony that-
Can you speak into the microphone?
Relative to the planning testimony, I'll sort of just rehash what we discussed at the first meeting. So this is an application for an isolated undersized lot. The case law that establishes the proofs for this are the Dahl Meyer versus Lacy Township. And it's a five-prong approach that you have to make sure that, and I'll go through them one by one. So one of the items that we submitted in preparation of the prior hearing were buy-sell letters. That is demonstrating that we are trying to bring this property into conformance, either through the acquisition of an adjacent property or a portion of an adjacent property, or proposing the same question to an adjacent property owner, do they want to buy all or a portion of our property? The buy-sell letters came back and neither adjacent property owner wanted to buy or sell all or a portion of their land. The next thing we had to do was try to provide as compliant a design consistent with other undersized lots in the area. This is a uniquely shaped undersized lot, and I think the board at the last hearing took the position that the home that was proposed was too large for the lot. So I think what we proposed is reasonable for the area, and I think with the additional changes that we're making of the removal of the covered porch and the narrowing of the driveway, this is comparable to some of the developments that you'll see on other undersized lots. We need to demonstrate that we were not in violation of traditional purposes of planning such as light air and open space. And I reviewed some of the, I also reviewed the application under the authority of the C2 variance criteria or the flexible variance criteria. I found no real detriment. I mean, replacing a very small, very old home that may be somewhat of an eyesore with a new home that meets, you know, current building standards and current residential construction standards. So it would be an aesthetic upgrade to the area, to the property. And also, the property is zoned as a residentially zoned property. This is where residential construction should occur, albeit with some relief due to the undersized nature of the property. So this is as clear-cut of a hardship variance as there is. Again, the property about the detention basin to the east, no ability to acquire any of that property. And the neighbors to the north has no intention of selling or buying. And if you look at the awkwardness of the property and the shape, the property owner even to the south only has a very small portion of a common property line. So this property is truly isolated, but in an infill development nature. So it's surrounded by other residential homes, but it really is sort of on an island by its own. So I think what we proposed this evening is reasonable, and I would ask that the board grant approval.
Thank you, Jen.
I think that with the removal of that cover porch and the fact that the building coverage is now compliant, the lot is significantly undersized, they've improved the setback, and I don't disagree with the testimony. I think the house is, you know, an average-sized house, and they're going to have to get the Board of Health approval for the septic system, the narrowing of the driveway to limit the coverage to the best that they can. I don't take exception to the release at their request.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, the two comments I was just saying, obviously they got to get the Monmouth County Board of Health approval, and then you've heard the representation from Mr. Wilder that the septic system is not to be mounted. So in going through that process, through the test pits and everything like that, if it was now to be mounted, you know, more than six inches above, great, I'd ask that they return to the board for amended approval.
Okay, and we're going to put the fence in?
Yes, sir. A six-foot fence on the north side of the-
Is there going to be a sump pump in the basement?
We haven't contemplated that.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah.
Have you done a test pit where the basement would be?
We have not, but I did take a look at the soils information for this property and not to bore the board. But the property is in what's known as a hydrologic soil group A soil. That usually has very deep groundwater and very highly permeable soils. It's called downer sandy loam. So the estimate, based on the Ocean County Soil Survey for this type of soil, is that groundwater is more than six and a half feet down. And six and a half feet is sort of the max that the soil survey will demonstrate.
So Matt, I'm just going to say that Brickyard has a lot of wetlands in that area. It's, there's a lot of wet area. So are you married to a basement? So like, if the test pit doesn't give you the results you want?
No basement. Sure, sure.
Okay, that sounds enough.
If the groundwater-
Because there's a lot of wetlands along Brickyard. So if, what I don't want to have happen is the building to be elevated out of the ground.
And to that point, as Mr. Kuntliff pointed out, if we end up having to do a mounded system, we're going to see you guys again to illustrate that plan.
Just to add on to that, I'm pretty sure the attachment requirements require test pits for basements to like confirm separation to seasonal line and all that kind of stuff before you can actually put one of them-
So that's a requirement, yes. Okay. So, sir, in summary?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. We're ready to proceed with the vote.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead, going over just a few things again, just a reminder here. Removing the porch, bringing that driveway to eighteen foot, moving the ACs, which is a wonderful thing, and putting up the fence to help the neighbor. And again, obviously, we just talked about the mounting of the septic and coming back if that needs to be done. But with all that being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hughes and Scott. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Thank you for working with us, yes.
Thank you so much.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you for talking.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
That's it. Yeah, I'm ready. I don't know if we get all four in, huh? And they made subsequent concessions?
Okay.
Hold on, Mr. Chair.
I thought for sure you guys were going to take a break.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to say something, Ken? Mr. Chairman, you're the, Mr. Pape, who has the next application after this one, I believe is looking to be carried now, I think because of the hour.
You think we don't have time? Is that what it is? Jen, what are you thinking?
I think this will probably take, I mean, Dennis, how many witnesses do you have?
I have three witnesses, but I'm somewhat playing it by ear based on what the board needs.
So three witnesses is a solid forty-five minutes.
Okay.
I don't think I'm going to take that long, but Famous last, please.
Let's say he takes us to nine thirty.
That's my guess. He's going to take us to nine thirty.
Then, Mr. Pape, can we do, you can close out?
I have a total of five witnesses. I could do one. My, I want to respect the board's time. I learned that if I came on October seventh, I would be the first thing on the agenda. I'd probably be able to do all five witnesses.
Okay. Is that what you'd like to do, sir?
I think it is, Mr. Chairman. I think doing just one and breaking it apart from the rest-
October seventh is, that's not Columbus Day, is it?
Better not. Mrs. Rabano?
Hold on. It shouldn't be, but-
Eleventh.
The thirteenth.
Fourteenth. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, those folks that are here for case number BA twenty-four dash zero seven, eighteen oh five US nine, this is a used variance and preliminary final major site plan. This application is going to be carried to October seventh. With no further notice, expiration of time remains the same, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
All reasonable requests of this board for any extensions will always be granted. And I would ask if you could confirm, we're the top of the agenda that night?
Yes, you are.
From Mrs. Rabano, Mr. Chair, it's in stone.
You're good, Mr. Pape. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
See you then.
Have a good night.
Night, Ken.
Okay, up in front of the board, case number BA twenty-four dash oh eight, Modern Classic Auto Sales. This is a used variance and amended preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Modern Classic Auto Sales LLC as applicant and Ardena LLC LLC as owners seeking used variance and amended preliminary and final major site plan approval to use existing three thousand eight hundred twenty-five plus or minus square feet of tenant space for an automobile sales use with no additional site improvements proposed on premises known as block one seventy-seven, lot twenty-eight oh one, one thousand eight, State Route thirty-three, Unit one. Expiration date, October second, twenty twenty-four. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Dennis Galvin with the firm of Davison, East Muno, San Peon, and I'm representing the applicant. And boy, that sounds really, really heavy and complicated.
Dennis, you can probably sit, because that cube thing on the table is a microphone.
Jen tells me to sit, I sit.
Mr. Galvin, you have three witnesses?
I do.
Let's get them all sworn in and one time under this application, please.
Raise your right hand.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, please state your names for the record and spell your last.
Kenneth Riley, R I L E Y.
Christine Cofone, C O F O N E.
Robert Siv, S I V S and Victory.
The professionals are sworn.
Thank you.
Not qualified yet, but-
Not qualified, but they're sworn. Okay, so-
Let me tell you, let's talk about this case. You previously approved at this location warehousing uses, right? It's on Route thirty-three. It's got a gravel parking lot.
Go ahead.
Okay, and one of those units, we want to occupy one of those units.
How many units are there? Seven?
Nine.
Nine?
Okay, nine.
Okay, so it's a flex space.
It's a flex space. This is one of the units. We want to use it for the sale of used cars. Now, when I think of used cars, I'm thinking nineteen fifties, the cars are on the lot, the flags are waving. That's not what this is, not even remotely close. We're in, we are on the internet. We buy classic cars, we hold them, and then we sell them at the Mannheim auction. So we don't need any cars outside this building for sale. We will have to have two cars in the building designated for sale because motor vehicle, in there with the manor regulations, require it. Because they only have two classifications of licenses, new and used cars. They don't have a classification for internet buying and selling of cars.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to interject. Used auction sales is permitted, which is what this applicant is proposing. Used car sales is not permitted. So if you're representing that, it's going to be something other than like the online stuff, then we're going to have a problem with your notice, because that's not permitted at all, and that's a D one. If it's like, so used auction sales is a conditional use. So I would probably just move on.
Okay.
So, so-
So listen, I'm a-
I want to ask a question.
Sure.
Okay, since we got a little time. So if I go online and I buy a ten-year-old Porsche in Florida, right, and I have it shipped up, I give it to you, can you resell it for me?
Well, we would buy it from you.
Yes.
And then, and then we would hold it, and then we would eventually deliver it to Mannheim to be auctioned.
Okay, so you have, so there's a process that you have?
My client wants to correct me, but-
Go, go ahead. So then-
So-
We don't want to go deeply.
Mannheim is the biggest auto auction franchise in the world, and we are one of those dealers that sell off-site at their auction. So when we buy these cars from private people off their internet ads, the cars go to Mannheim to be sold. So they're held here, they go to Mannheim to be sold off-site.
So when we say classic, what-
It's, the company name, Modern Classic, is for a reason, because we buy newer cars, like eighties and nineties and up, not classic muscle cars. We buy cars that are newer, collectible cars. So not your typical restoration stuff, stuff that is original condition and not things that are being restored and sold at like a, like a Barrett-Jackson where they have a lot of muscle cars. We focus on newer stuff to resell by finding them in original condition.
Okay, so this is not necessarily like Testeroses and Ferraris and all that?
We do a lot of Corvettes and newer muscle cars. If you want to classify those types of cars as muscle cars.
Okay, all right. So that's the high-end side.
Yes, yeah. We do not go into high-end exotics. We buy more of your weekend sports cars you see cruising around on a Sunday. Stuff like Corvettes, Mustangs, Shelby's, for instance.
Is that good? You did good?
We're understanding it.
Yeah.
So, you know, Jen has in her stuff, you know, there's no, there's no cars out front, right? There's nothing like that. You're not buying and selling. People are not coming to your place to do any purchasing.
We're not open to the public?
He's going to tell you that once or twice a year, someone could come there and buy a car there, but that is the absolute exception.
Okay, in other words?
He's doing two hundred cars a year. They're all online and at the auction. And there's, over the years, we can produce proof that he's only sold two cars, which is a requirement of the motor vehicle community.
Got it. Jen?
No, I'm okay. I just want to make sure we focus on like the internet and that-
The operational piece of it.
This is not a typical used car lot where you have-
This is auction.
I agree.
I a hundred percent agree. And they don't finance, and they don't, they're not, they're not negotiating with the public. This is like, they find something privately, they auction it privately. There's no interaction at the location, which I think is the conditional use. And, and so I feel like they're okay with what they're proposing. I just don't want to go to the left on it.
Okay, so this is a low-intensity use?
A hundred percent.
Super low.
Okay.
My only question is, is if you need two cars for sale in the building to the, like, how does that, is there any- You're going to have the same two cars for sale always and no one's going to buy? Like, what? You know what I mean? Like, what does that mean?
My client will answer it, but if you ask my client the right question, he will give you a detailed answer.
Yeah.
So, okay, go ahead.
So motor vehicle requires us to be capable of displaying two cars, meaning we have to have a little spot that is designated for those two cars, but we don't have to actively have those cars for sale, which we do not plan to have them actively for sale. We just have to comply with their requirements of having those two cars to have the license in this location.
Like, the cars and a spot for them?
Just a spot for the two cars would be in compliance with motor vehicle. Not that we're going to have them there with-
No, I understand. I understand.
Okay.
Do you have to put a for-sale sign on them while they're just sitting there?
They don't have to be even sitting there.
For sale.
They just have to have the spaces there to be able to, to meet their requirements. They don't actually have to be- They don't actually have, have to be advertised or even have a sign on them.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't have to be physically on-site, correct? Yeah.
It doesn't, we, we could have zero cars there on the site, like, if they were to come and check, we wouldn't, and say we had no cars on-site at all, as long as we had those two spaces available for when we bring cars in, then they would understand that we have the ability to do that, just to meet the requirement.
And, and I don't think I'm wrong in saying this, what we have right now, we have a CO for warehouse in our office, that's all we really need, but the, the motor vehicle won't recognize that and allow us to have this as our official location without going through this process, and that's what we're doing.
So, just to clarify that, so they did get a CO, uh, and I talked to Mr. Howard about this, for the storage of automobiles as a, you know, fitting under the guise of the warehousing, it's the resailing, reselling of the automobiles which triggered them to come to the board here. So they are approved to store motor vehicles in the building as a storage component of the warehouse space, so they're here for the sales component of the vehicles. The two spaces you talked about, is that, can they be inside the building?
They are, and they're in, they're next to the, they're going to be next to the stairs internally.
Gotcha, so the outdoor parking spaces that are allocated for the unit are for like the office space and?
Strictly for the two, two, two users of, in the office.
Okay, and then, I think it was, there was conditional use statements on the plans, I'm just going to ask the questions to make sure the board is aware of it, right? So all the cars coming to the site are in operable condition, they don't need mo- auto body work, oil changes or anything like that?
No, we don't do any work, we're not going to do any work on-site.
Correct, and then, um, getting to the site, you know, it's like a flatbed, that two, two trucks or less kind of thing, or two vehicles or less?
Eileen, can I see, um, photos A ten and A eleven? And it shows the caliber of the vehicles that we have, or the type.
Yeah, so I think that's important for, they're not coming on like car hauler to like an auto dealership, right, they're, you know, trailer, two cars, three cars or less coming into the site, um, uh.
How long do they stay there?
Typically, typically within a month, but sometimes.
No.
No, the whole, the, the trailer.
Getting the car up and off, an hour, tops.
So they're not going to stay overnight and be there?
No, absolutely not.
Any point in time?
No.
Because one of the conditions is that there's no outdoor storage in the front yard, so I just want to make sure that anything you bring on-site is going to be put in the building?
Correct.
Okay.
And how many, how many cars are you going to need?
I factored the maximum that fifteen cars could fit in there with, um, we have a few lifts in there for storage purposes, and I don't see us really having fifteen at once, but it's, it's capable.
How big is this space?
Uh, can we back up to the, um, indoor? There you go. See the four, the four squares at the bottom? That's, that's, that's the lifts, so the cars.
It's a little less than four thousand square feet. Like thirty-eight hundred square feet.
And in one of the pictures, there's a jack more forward, what that's for is so they can lift the car on the jack and take pictures underneath.
So the four rack storage in the back, how many, what's the capacity, is that double stack, eight, or can you fit?
There are two on the, the top and mid-level and one on the floor.
So how many cars total on that?
That would be twelve, and we need space in front of them for maneuvering and those two designated areas.
Two designated spots?
Yeah.
So fourteen.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's.
Fourteen is the rate.
And the lift that's closer towards the front, that's just so you can lift them up, take pictures, right, you're not going to have ones parked underneath it and we're, okay.
Inspection and photographs.
Gotcha, and then, uh, so just for transparency, so across the street is a used auto car auction shop, do, are you anticipating to like operate in conjunction with them at all, with any of your?
No, not at all.
I just, yeah, just to ask a question because I know, I think there's been some accidents uh, at that site entrance coming in and out, and, you know, anyone coming across the street on a tractor trailer, or not tractor trailer, but like a flatbed, it's a, you know, not a, not a safe, uh, turning movement to get over there, so I, I think that's really all I have for operational.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
You own all the cars that'll be in there?
Yes.
There's nothing on consignment or anything?
No, nope.
Little letter. When you speak, a little letter.
No, I, we, the company owns all cars.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Sev is the engineer?
He is, now, we asked Mr. Sev to be our engineer in this case because he was the engineer when the site plan was approved.
Okay.
So I, I don't think there's going to be much that Mr. Sev can tell us, but why don't you come on up? As long as he paid him, we're okay. What's that? As long as I pay him, we're okay, right?
Charlie? From an engineering perspective?
Yeah, so, uh.
Do we need to qualify, Mr. Sev?
Yeah, sure.
Do I accept his qualifications?
All right, go ahead, Mr. Sev.
But we, now, he was sworn in.
Sworn in.
Yeah. Do you need my qualifications or?
He appeared on the case when.
Are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, sir?
Yes.
You are, how long you been a licensed engineer?
It's a good question, I have, since two thousand and two, I think it was, what was it, twenty-two years?
Okay, well, it's up to your credentials, okay.
But Paul, you didn't ask where he went to school.
I know, but we, we see Mr. Sev out a number of times.
It's New Jersey, it's your technology.
So I'll, I'll just ask some quick questions, but I'll cut to the chase, so, uh, right, the site's been built, you've gotten a CO, right, for the site and everything, um, the drive aisle coming out of there, it's DJI, it's still like that, um, there's no issues with that being tracked down onto like Route thirty-three or anything like that, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, in fact, there's a paved first fifty feet from Route thirty-three into the site that's paved to help eliminate tracking of stone onto Route thirty-three.
Gotcha, I would just say as.
In other words, if you, yeah, so not, not spinning out or anything like that, okay?
Yeah, they do have a paved asphalt apron, I just put it on the record again, like, you know, applicant and the property owner in general, just responsible for making sure that that material's not getting tracked down on, under Route thirty-three.
Agreed.
Uh, I had a comment about the septic system, there was a note on there about being water-filled, you've gotten, uh, the, property owner's gotten approval from Board of Health and everything's above board as far as the septic system, right?
That's correct, we have a certificate of compliance to utilize the septic.
Okay.
And there's no, I think Board of Health said they take, took no issue because there was no like increase in the office space or anything like that, there's no like kitchen or any additional like sink space for like food preparation?
There is not, and the Board of Health corrected, had no objection to this application.
And then, um, there is, uh, sewer main obviously installed up Fairfield Road, I think there's some future plans for that to be expanded.
The two oh eight's going to be expanded, yes.
Yeah, so should it become available at any time in the future, I just, uh, the, you know, the property owner be required to, you know, connect at some point in the future if it becomes globally available?
I believe that was part of the original site plan approval, and that property, the owner, the whole complex would have to do that.
Restating it again for the record as part of this.
Yes, okay, Andy, you catching that, yep? All right.
Um.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we fully intend to, whatever was previously promised should be met.
Yeah, so, and then I think they do technically need relief of like the parking requirement because I think we might have calculated based off eight parking spaces and, or eight vehicles, they're saying it's twelve or fourteen, uh, but you've heard the testimony about like predominantly all the auctions are off-site, you know, there's maybe once a year that someone comes into site to do a sale transaction on the site, so, I mean, with the office base component, you know, I think it's just under three hundred square feet, only one space is required, you know, I think what they have is adequate.
So, so then where's all the, the body work done, if, you know, the polishing and everything?
It's not going to be on-site, I'll tell you that.
Come on back up, come on. We don't do any of that on-site. Yeah, just, just tell the board, go ahead.
We outsource everything, we have a detailed shop, we've been, um, doing business with for over ten years up on East Brunswick, and same with any mechanical requirements, we'll go to the dealership for.
Okay, so nothing's done on-site?
Nothing on-site.
Okay, good.
Oh, I have.
That's all you have, Charlie?
Yep.
Board members have any questions for the engineer?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um. Fire Bureau gave, uh, a list of things, we'll be able to be in compliance with that?
Um, I think the Fire Bureau.
Fire lane, fire lane specific for project? Am I looking?
I think those are recommendations that, like painting, we can't paint because it's a gravel parking area or driveway area. So the cover page was, the Bureau has no objections to the proposed project, and then the second page was the fire lane marked, I think this is a standard sheet that we get with the review letter. Um, I have no objection to complying with what we can, but, you know, painting the gravel doesn't, doesn't.
Well, we just put signs, don't we?
Um, I, if there's si- I believe there's signs already out there.
So, just to clarify, like, the site's been built, they've gotten off all their inspections and COs, so, you know, they're approved to operate from the site as far as the storage component, so conceivably all that signage was handled at the time of getting CO for, you know, the, the site as a whole.
And if there's, signs are missing, then we're going to send John out there.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
All right, and also the, um, is a fire suppression system needed because it's, cars being stored in there, fire, fire suppression, fire lo- uh.
I don't know the answer to that question, I don't believe so, but I believe that'd be a building inspection item that would come up as part of.
They didn't bring it up a- a- as far as their review of this application, they said no objection.
And I would say, what, one of the things I said in the beginning is, we already got a CO, our vehicles are already stored there, so I'm sure that if something was required, they would have directed us to do it at that time.
Correct.
Nothing will change as a result.
The reason that they're here is because of their licensure, they have to be a sales facility as opposed to a storage facility, they're allowed to store the vehicles, if they weren't selling anything, they would be allowed to store those vehicles in there as of today, they already have their approvals to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I have nothing further from our engineer.
We don't have anything here.
And I'll bring our planner up to sort of the D one, D three variants and. Just D three, okay, I thought the underlying building was.
Ms. Cofone, you're a licensed?
Yes, still licensed.
In the state of New Jersey?
Planner, yep, still intact, still have that license. Uh, so the proofs that we're seeking tonight, because the site is in the H D four zone, which back in twenty twenty-two, um, the township went through a great exercise to add a bunch of auto-related uses to that zone, so we conditionally meet and we conditionally comply with most of those conditions. So what the board is left to reconcile is, absent compliance with all those conditions, is this still an appropriate location for this use? And I would submit that, based on the testimony of Mr. Riley and the very unique, um, operations of his business, I went out to the site and went in because I really, um, I had a, initially a hard time understanding how this business operates, I'm not much of a car girl, so I couldn't really understand, and I went and I, I met with him there and, you know, we saw his whiteboard, how he, he cheeses and tracks down his vehicles, and I saw the space, and I can tell you that, you know, you could eat lunch off the floor in, in the room where he keeps his vehicles, uh, he has a fabulous white Corvette in there when I was there last time, it was a convertible, I asked him if he wanted me to drive it to the hearing tonight, but he didn't, so, um, but it's really a very unique operation in that it's very clean and very low intense and much, and this, these pictures were taken not by me, I did visit the site, but I'm not the greatest at taking pictures, so these were done under my direction, um, some of our team went out and did the pictures, but if you go to the next page of pictures, I think it really, um, they're a little hard to see, the color didn't come through great, but I, I can tell you that based on my physical observation of this, if you were in here, there's no way, oh, the, that's, I think it's in there, it's so, so fabulous, um, you would never know that this is an auto sales, that they're, they're doing any type of sales, they don't offer financing to their clients, they don't have an Instagram that says, this is our daily special where they're promoting, in fact, when I asked Mr. Riley, explain to me your business, like you were visiting a career day at school and kids had no idea what you were doing, he said, I don't even like to sell my cars to my friends because invariably if there's a problem, that's just not, he's like, that's not how I'm successful, that's not what I do here, so he explained to me fully the nature of his business, and I think that certainly, um, it, absent compliance with the conditional use, this is actually, in my opinion, far less intensive than what you actually envisioned for an auction, you actually would allow an au- auto auction to have an auction once a week here, you allow it on a five-acre site, so it comes with a lot more intensity than the way Mr. Riley is operating, so when you look at that, I think you certainly can conclude that absent compliant with the conditional use, we're still an appropriate location, and then when you get to the negative criteria, it's not that there, you know, our test is no detriment, it's that, is there a substantial detriment? And here, I think you can be assured that there's no detriment to the intent and purpose, you know, of the zone plan or the master plan, right, the master plan was looked at in twenty twenty-three, and it talked about preserving the high level of services and providing new facilities and opportunities for growth and economic development, um, in the township, so statutorily, I think we meet our burden of proof for the grant to the variances, and, um, they can be granted with no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone.
You're welcome.
I have, I, I take the exception, I, I don't disagree at all, I think this is far less intense than what is anticipated with a typical car auction, I just have a couple questions, and I don't know, Christine, if this is for you or it's for the applicant.
I'll try.
What's the hours of operation?
So I'm going to let Kenneth answer that because I'm not sure.
Because we do have conditions associated with the hours of operation.
We do.
What are your hours of operations?
Eight-thirty to five.
Is that true?
Yes.
Speak up louder, louder.
Is that the hours?
So comply, so we comply, eight-thirty to five is what's permitted in the zone, that's the.
I mean, so at the end of the day, a couple of the conditions are, you know, do you have sewer, they don't have sewer in this location, I don't, you don't have a tremendous amount of, of employees, correct?
Two.
Two employees are not going to generate enough use, let's, let me, I'm trying to diplomatically put this.
With two, it gets personal.
I know, so I, I don't take any exception, I actually think, I agree with the testimony that those uses that are permitted in the zone to occupy flex would be far more intense than this use. Um, and the only other thing I ask is, how frequent, and I know this is probably, on average, let me put it this way, on average, how frequent do you anticipate those trailers coming to the site?
It happens once a week, if that, so I would say at the most, three times a month.
I, I, I.
It's in and out?
Well, they come in, then they go out.
I'm telling you now, when you take the, the cars to auction, like, how often does that happen? That's out, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, how often do the cars go to auction?
There's a weekly auction we go to every Friday in Pennsylvania, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, so not only does the truck come, sometimes once a week, maybe three times a month, we also drive the cars to the auction as well.
So at most, four times a month?
Yes.
So you're talking seven trips a month?
That would be, yes.
Let's say ten.
Yes.
Right, let's say ten.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a very low-intense use. I, I don't take exception to the testimony that's been provided, I think this is an excellent use of the space, I think it's far less intense than was anticipated when it was originally appro- approved, so I don't take exception to any of the testimony that's been provided.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, just one last question, I apologize, so, um, there's never a possibility where like you, you know, you're closing up shop and you're going to take all twelve cars and put them on a trailer and take them over to Mannheim to sell them at one kind of time?
No, um, we, we, I have one, one hauler, as you saw in the picture, that, that's the only tow truck that I work with, he does two at a time, and then the other cars that we bring weekly, we drive a couple, so that's a.
That's, that's all I wanted to ask, you're good.
The, our goal is to be licensed in this location and become a HAL business and dispose of our Lakewood office, and we live in Freehold, and we want to be here, so. I know I am, what I used to do back in the day when I was a forecourt attorney is I would sometimes suggest to the board, if any member is concerned, they're uncertain how they want to vote, that they would do a kindness and let me carry to the next meeting for seven.
I think that happened naturally, uh, a couple of applications ago, so. Right?
You have to open to public first.
Open to public, is there anybody in public?
No, 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 she's with us, and in fact, they're going, they give you a bonus, they're, they got married a couple of months ago, but they've been too busy to go on a honeymoon, and after tonight, their honeymoon, so.
Andy, there's nobody in public, do I need to open to public?
Yes.
Why not?
Well, you need to open and then close.
I would like to recommend, I will open to public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're open to public.
At this time, the chairman's open the hearing up to the public, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're close to public.
Public is now closed.
Okay, so then, here we are, case number BA twenty-four dash oh eight. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation, we approve this application.
Second.
Motion in the second, Eileen, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
I am having a field day looking at all the vets on your site right now, I'm a vet girl, I grew up around vets, so, yes.
My favorite car.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, and, and hopefully your honeymoon's going to come up sooner.
All right, we've got a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Thank you.